Turn your mic down before you start talking at it. It'll echo right out that front door. You look, you look summary this morning.
Stand by, Mayor, I can send it.
First vacation I've had in, I don't even know how long.
We will be sharing some things.
It's a girl trip. He said no table. Oh, okay, good. I didn't know we did that last time. Do we join with computer audio? You want to join without audio? Yes, how many times? Got you. Good thing you got paper. Not open yet.
I have called the meeting of the Everman City Council order is Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the time is six thirty-two. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence while I pledge allegiance. First item on agenda is consent agenda. We have reading of the minutes from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes, and financial report for April twenty twenty-three. We entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Most remain sacred. Any for discussion?
Yes, I have a question on, on the expenditure summary report. At the bottom, it's talking about the administrative expenses for the, the city hall, the roof, as well as the park. The park and then doing budget amendments, and my question is, since we already have the funds from ORPA or wherever y'all are getting the funds from, why not just go ahead and deduct them at that time versus doing amendments?
The, the expenditures have to go through the budget amendment process. They have to be approved through a public hearing.
Well, I mean, we, but we approved it for the roof. The council approved it for the roof. Is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so.
But any changes made to the actual budget have to go through the, the process. We have to have a public hearing, and we are scheduled to do those twice a year. So we will be having one coming up hopefully in the month of June to have all of the budget amendments up to date processed, and then again at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so is that the same with that we get like the, the funds that we got from Congressman B.C., that, that'll, it's the same as with that?
If we were aware of it prior to the budget being approved, then it was already indicated and then it's already reflected. However, if it was approved after the fact, then yes, the budget amendments have to be followed.
Any for discussion? Hold, council?
These two. Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five. Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next items presentations, item A, recognition of Mayor Pro Tim Susan Mackey for twenty-five years of service. She's gonna love this. Okay, so Susan Mackey is our longest running council member, and I'm behind her by a few years, but appreciate her as, as our Mayor Pro Tim, and me and her have had a lot of conversations about what happens in the city, and she's been a good person to have here with me, so. So.
Thank you. Oh, wow. Not over, we don't mind. Can you see everybody behind me?
Yes, I sure can.
Thank you. Oh, I want to sit right there. Thank you.
Okay, next item, item C is proclamation for National Police Week. Okay, whereas are more than eighty hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including dedicated members of the Everman Police Department, and whereas since the first recorded death of seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including Everman Sergeant Alex Arango, and whereas the names of those dedicated public service servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C., and whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored on May fifteenth, which was proclaimed by President John F. Kennedy in nineteen sixty-two as National Peace Officer, National Peace Officers Day, and whereas it is important that we recognize the loyal devotion, faithful service, and the willingness to sacrifice that all public safety officers display, past and present. And whereas this week be a tribute to the men and women who serve aside fear and doubt, these officers who preserve the rules of law for our city of Everman, and now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Everman that we proclaim May fourteen, twenty twenty-three to May twentieth, twenty twenty-three as National Police Week in the City of Everman, where it's all citizens that join us in recognizing Everman police officers and reflect on their invaluable contributions as we enjoy the peace that bring to our city, and let us vow that their service will never be taken for granted.
We have a truckload of them. This is your every body. You get one too.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item, a proclamation for Public Works Week. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Everman. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it, whereas it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civil leaders, and children in Everman to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Everman that we proclaim May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, to May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as National Public Works Week in the City of Everman, where it's all citizens that join us in recognizing public work, uh, Everman Public Work employees and reflect on their invaluable contributions to the community in which we live, work, and play.
Yes, thank you very much, Gilbert.
Okay, we're going back to item B. Administration of Youth of Office for City Councils, place one, three, and five. So place three and place five will step forward.
Yeah, if y'all just want to stand right where you're at.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, go ahead.
Be easier to hear.
Glad you said something. I skipped right over it. Linda Sanders couldn't be here tonight, but she'll be sworn in at later date, so. The next item, Susan's comments. Do we have anything? I know Susan's comment. Discussion items, item A, Columbine Wellsack, Councilmember Johnny Allen.
Yes, I wanted to bring this to council for discussion because I wanted to know when the project was started and when it should be complete.
We're trying to see if we can get the Public Works Director if he's still here. I, I don't know the exact dates of when it was started. The project is complete. The well has been installed. The only thing they're doing now is still doing the pumping through to filter out any leftover materials and things through the lines. And I think they said that that should be done probably this month. I think, I think they said it took about thirty days to process. So that should be the only thing that's left at this point with the well.
Okay, are there any more costs? Is there any more cost to this project?
I believe it's completely paid out. I don't think there's any additional cost left on the project at all.
Okay, are they over their date or under their date, or what was the completion date, you know?
Sorry to put you on the spot here. Gilbert, do you know the questions were the timeline on the Columbine well site? Do we know when it started, what their status is, when it'll be complete?
I don't know off the top of my head, but they are past their date. But that was due to parts and stuff they can't get. Now they're able to get it, but it's gonna get done till the end of August. That's the updated date we got.
Okay, so how, how far behind are they?
To be really honest with you, I don't have that with me.
We'd have to pull the contract and, and see where they're at on it with the engineer. Uh, this project was, whenever we do a wellsite project or any other waterline project, the engineer completes the scope of work and the timeline as a part of the contract. And that's usually a pretty thick contract that we have them execute. Um, we'd have to go through that and see what the timelines were on those.
Okay, because I mean, some days, I mean, some weeks rather, it's, it's nobody there. Um, and, and nothing's being done on it. So I was just trying to see, also are they, you said flushing it out, are they finished with that?
They have finished one section or one part of it, but they have to pull that well back out because it's not providing enough gallons per minute like it's supposed to. So they're gonna go back, take it out, clean it out, put it back in, and see if they can get it to where it needs to be at. It's just having a lot of issues with the ground, the way it is and all that stuff, so.
Okay, so, and, and once they're finished with repairing the, the well or whatever, because they, they built the new well, correct?
Yes, man.
Okay, so what, as far as, um, I guess the, um, not beautification of it, but what, what are they gonna do afterwards? Because they tore down the fence that was on side. Are they gonna replace that?
Yes.
Is it just gonna be grass or, or, or what?
Yes, they're gonna go back and replace it. They're actually gonna put concrete so we can walk through there and be able to take our chlorine bottles. They're gonna do some, some new things there. They guys should beautify it, make it look nice.
Okay, because I noticed that they put a new, a storage building there. That's, okay. Okay, so like I said, I'm just trying to see when, when the, when is the projected completion date? Because it's been going on so long and it just leaves a mess. I mean, you, you have water running all the way down to Columbine, and it's like a gray ash or something. Once it's dried and, and you know. And it's like a gray ash or something. Once it's dried and, and you know, residents don't know what that is. So I'm just, just following up on it.
Yes, ma'am. And we can get your date, um, once I get back. I'll send you a date.
Do we have anything from a contractor in writing? Uh, can we get with, let's follow up with the city engineer on that and see if we have any problems we need to address, contractual problems we need to address?
Uh, yes, I can do that.
Okay, great. Sounds good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you going to need him for C?
I, I don't know. We'll find out. Don't worry, just hang, hang loose.
Okay, next item, city of Everman financial transparency site, Johnny Allen.
Uh, yes, I've, it's been over a year now for the transparency, financial transparency site. And I'm trying to see when that's going to be replaced or fixed or, or something. Because I mean, we owe it to our residents and let them know where their money's going. How it's being spent.
So when we, well, and I think. I think we, we do a pretty good job in my opinion anyway of, of being very transparent with our financial reports. Um, our financial reports are always available online and we publish everything from every check that's been cut, every expenditure to the status. Um, so even with the financial transparency tool itself online being down, there's still a resource right there available for the public. Um, we also, uh, make sure that our auditing reports are available for the public on the website and any other resources. Um, the tool itself, when we did the open gov migration from the traditional STW to open gov cloud. Uh, it, it took down the transparency page. And if you remember when we were going through that. Uh, council gets logins to the open gov platform that we use for our financial software. So you can customize your reports and things. And we just reached out to open gov now that we're fully implemented and done. Uh, because we really need to schedule a work session with you as council to train you on how to access all that information and run your own reports and things.
If there's something specific, I'm more than happy to run any report that anyone requests. Um, it literally will take me one minute or two.
Okay, so do y'all know when it's going to be up, back up and running? Oh, it won't.
It will be a different face to it.
Okay, well, the new, um, the one that you're replacing it with, is it going to be more detailed like, um.
You will, you will have the ability to drill down as far, uh, as the transaction to see exactly. You know, the department said it hit. Yes, you will be able to, to see the same detail.
The, does, um, any of the data that in this transparency, uh, site, does that go to the auditors? Or have anything to do with the auditors?
They have sign ons as well, yes.
No, what, no, I mean, the, the one that, that's not working, was that previously, were they getting any information from that?
But they do have sign ons to sign into our software at any time.
Next item, item C, city of Everman mineral rights, councilwoman Johnny Allen.
Um, I asked for this because I know it's been over 10 years now and, um, the city did get funds, um. Uh, from the mineral rights and I was, and it, it should be time or past time. And I was wondering if, if we received anything on that.
We have received just here recently, oh, probably the last two or three months, we have received, um, very small amounts of money, like. A hundred fifty here, $200 there. Um, that, that's the extent of the mineral rights.
Okay, did we renew or anything like that?
But I'm, I don't have any.
Very many processes with that. We'd have to consult with the attorney. Is there anything we need to do to renew on the mineral rights as a government that you know?
Well, normally it's.
Yeah. I don't know if we as a government need to renew on our mineral rights like the residents do.
I've never had to rename.
Yeah, when I received those very small deposits that hit, that hit our, they hit directly to our account. So I had to do a little research as to what they were, um, but it was for mineral rights.
Okay, so all the city is getting is you say a hundred fifty dollars a month or something like that? Okay, what, what fund is that going to? Did we set up a revenue fund for that or anything?
It goes directly to the general fund. It has its own.
Line item, okay.
Okay, next item, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, National Fitness Campaign, Fitness Court staff update.
Yeah, made the wrong button there. So I just wanted to give counsel an update, um, on the National Fitness Campaign, Fitness Court. Do you have the date? Did we confirm the, the final date of the ribbon cutting? Do you have that handy by chance? So we, we will be looking to schedule installation and a ribbon cutting likely at some point in June. Um, the fitness court installers are getting ready to come down here and install the fitness equipment onto the concrete pad that's been installed over here in the coming weeks. Um, Gilbert is, is coordinating all of that. And then shortly after that installation, we will be looking to schedule a, uh, a grand opening and ribbon cutting of the fitness court. Uh, representatives from Blue Cross Blue Shield, National Fitness Campaign will be here. To support that and obviously we'll send out a notice to our media partners to make sure that they're aware as well. Um, to try to publicize the new attraction here at the park.
Who did you say were installing it?
It's, it's the contractors that work directly with National Fitness Campaign. It's, it's folks that they typically have utilized in the past.
Anything else on that?
No, sir.
Okay, next time, city of Everman fee schedule update.
I just wanted to put this on your radar because I know you don't like things coming to you last minute, but I wanted to put it on your radar as, uh, as we have been working. We've made some staffing changes and some responsibility changes, uh, when it comes to permits. Um, I've asked Chief Watley to oversee and really revamp a lot of our permitting process because of some problems that we've had. Um, and they're not personnel issues. It's just been, we've had a lot of changes going to a third party review and things not, not necessarily flowing as smoothly as they should. As a part of that process, when we've been working with, with Bureau Veritas, who is our third party, uh, permitting and inspection and review company. Um, we've identified a lot of laps within our fee schedule, things that should be identified within our fee schedule that we don't have identified. And there have been numerous fees that haven't been updated within the fee schedule since literally the seventies. Um, and so it's, it's time that we revamp that because the purpose of the fee schedule is to cover the cost of operations. And through these new operations and the way that we're doing things, we, we are not covering those costs. Uh, so we're having to supplement our permit operations and staffing and things by pulling essentially from general fund. When our permit fees that we should collect should carry the overhead for those operations. Um, so we're, we've been working over the last about a week and a half. Uh, Rachel's been tremendous in helping us out with this. Uh, really evaluating like size cities and what other cities are charging and, and the Texas administrative code. And what the permissible charges and fees are and, and comparing that with ours and are presenting, are getting ready to present to you some adjustments. One of the outlandish changes that we've got is most cities, for example, this is just one example. When, when you're doing a residential build out, you charge per square foot of the home when you, when you've charged the permit. Many cities are in line with roughly about 80 cents a square foot. Uh, we charge nine cents a square foot.
Nine?
Nine cents a square foot.
Less than 10 cents.
So we're not even recovering the cost because we expend more than nine cents a square foot on having the third party company conduct the review on that. Uh, so we're, the city is actually forking up the difference. Um, so we've got to balance that out, um, and make sure that we're covering, covering the expenditures equally here. So we're not pulling from. General fund. Essentially, we're not pulling from people's property taxes to pay for other operations. So we're working on that. We should have something hopefully to present to you back at the next council meeting for your consideration. We can digest it at that point. If you're not comfortable approving at that point, you want to review it some more because it is, it is very lengthy. We can certainly postpone that and look to review it and approve it later in June as well. So just wanted to put that on your radar that it's coming. I'll try to send you a draft later this week, so you've got it ahead of time.
Are you normally compare, are you comparing it to other cities like y'all normally do?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we are pulling, uh, fee schedules from several other cities and comparing with what they're charging, uh, to make sure that we're staying in line with other cities.
Next time, consideration possible action. Item A. Resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 01, resolution of the city council, the city of Everman, Texas. Naming the inclusive playground located in Clyde Pittman Park, 300 Wichita Street as the Noel Rodriguez Alvarez Playground and providing an effective date. Whereas since March 25th, 2023, when an amber alert was first issued for missing six year old Noel Rodriguez Alvarez in the city of Everman. The story has captured the hearts of the citizens of Everman. And whereas through the diligent efforts of the Everman Police Department in coordination with numerous. Other law enforcement agencies and the coverage of the national news media. Over the months, long investigation and search for the missing boy, citizens across the country united with Everman in concern for Noel. And there as to honor and unit, that unity of the spirit and action and to memorialize the story of Noel. The city council, city memberman finds it to be the best interest of the city. To dedicate the inclusive playground as Clyde, at Clyde Pittman Park as a Noel Rodriguez Alvarez Playground. With appropriate signage and a memorial plaque containing details of Noel's story so that he. His story and its unifying impact on this community will be remembered for generations to come. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve resolution 2023 dash 05 dash 01 as read.
Motion being seconded. You've got some discussion on this, uh.
Mayor, before you guys go into discussion, I, I do want to share, um. A couple of things with you. First and foremost. Um, I wanted to share, this is a very early draft concept design of some of the equipment and things that'll be put into the park. Um, all of the equipment that we're looking to put into the park will be ADA compliant. Um, and designed specifically for children with, uh, social developmental and physical challenges. Um, the, uh, company that the county approved to contract with is Woralex. This company specializes in, in, uh, building these ADA compliant parks. Um, we're right now reviewing the color schemes and we're reviewing the specific park equipment to go in there. Uh, but I just kind of wanted to give you an idea of, of what we are looking at right now. Um, wanted to share something else with you. Uh, as you're considering the name change associated with this park. Um, I shared the, uh, wishes of the council to change the name of the park or to name the park after Noel with the contractor Woralex. They reached out and started working with their partners and, and, uh. Uh, subcontractors which include, uh, landscape structures, Forever Lawn, Forever Lawn Texas, Two by Two Industries, PLI Enterprises, and then of course Woralex themselves. They absolutely love the story that they want to come in and actually provide significant upgrades to the park above and beyond what was originally approved and allocated. And donate over $47,000 worth of upgrades to this park. That'll include the play turf on the park to make sure that it's, it's an actual AstroTurf on the park. Uh, not just the typical wood fiber material that's there. Uh, they want to provide, um, um. All sorts of, uh, uh, additional playground borders and playground equipment. Um, and are also wanting to discount a cost of the project, uh, off there to help further this project along and add more playground equipment. They also want to add very specialized signage at the park that'll include a photo of Noel on the signage. Uh, include a story, the, the backstory of Noel on there as well with a QR code. That people can scan and to go and learn about Noel and, and the backstory and then just make it very, very nice. Um, so I've been extremely grateful for, for them and, and what they're doing. And, and he's told me. Uh, David from Woralex, he's told me that he hasn't stopped working on this yet. He's still, he want, he wants to make this park extremely nice considering what it's going for. So just wanted to, you to have that in your mind as you're, as you're considering the name change here.
It's, I'll, I'll say it again. It's nice to see good things come out of that situation.
Yes, yes, very much.
So this is going to go, if, if you're looking at Pittman Park, we have the, the splash pad that's there. The plans are to, to remove the splash pad and convert that into a seating area for parents. Um, we've got the playground that's to the north, the existing playground that's to the north. And then this will be an additional playground to the south side of that. That'll be an entirely new playground adding on to what's already existing over there.
Is that the concrete pad that's out there?
No, the concrete pad that you're seeing out there now is the National Fitness Court.
Okay.
Um, the National Fitness Campaign, Fitness Court.
Okay, so back to the name, um. We had several residents had voiced their opinion that the mother's name should not be attached to the park. Which would be the Rodriguez part of it. So, uh. Was making a recommendation that we changed the name to Noel Angel Alvarez Playground. Everybody's good with that. Residents and people on Facebook stuff say that she doesn't deserve the recognition, so. But, uh, just want to put that out there. If everybody's good with it, then. I will entertain a amendment to the motion.
Okay, I move to amend resolution 2023 dash 05 dash 01 to name the inclusive playground. Noel Angel Alvarez Playground.
Motion being seconded for discussion. Hold council.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Can you go ahead and read it? Would you mind?
Absolutely. Uh, item B, consideration and appointment of members to the community safety advisory committee. Do we have any?
Yes, uh.
Okay.
People have signed up as Chris McIntyre. Heather Underwood, Daniella Soria. Susan Burgess and Herman West.
Yeah, Heather is not here tonight.
I believe we have Herman West here tonight, Mr. West, yep. And we've got Ms. Burgess. And then, um, I don't believe we have Chris McIntyre.
Daniella?
Daniella Soria or Heather here. So we will follow up with them and see if we can get them to come to the next council meeting. Um, Mr. Herman West and Ms. Susan Burgess with your approval will serve as voting members of the board. We also have Mr. Matt Sinclair here from the Boys and Girls Club who will serve as an advisory member to the board. Um, if you recall, when you approved the, uh, the, um. Ordinance or, or resolution creating the board, there are three advisory positions on the board that includes a member of the Boys and Girls Club. A member of the Everman Independent School District and a member or appointee from the Stallion Point Apartment Complex. Um, so we will coordinate with the other two to find out who their appointees are. They actually make those appointments. Um, so there won't be any action on the advisory members from council. We'll just need to get you to approve the other three members that'll come. So.
So we're, we're approving the five.
Approving five total tonight. You'll be approved, well, no, I'm sorry, mayor, tonight you'll, because we don't have the three here. Tonight, we're going to ask that you, with your approval, you'll approve Herman West and Susan Burgess to that board. Um, and then Matt Sinclair's here as well, uh, just to coordinate and get started on our first meeting.
Should we not just go ahead and vote them on? Then we got to swear them in later.
Um, I think we could with, I would feel comfortable with council moving forward with the appointments of Chris McIntyre. And the appointment of Daniella Soria, only because they have had interactions before and we've got good communication with them. Uh, Ms. Heather Underwood, she has not served on a board before. I, I tried reaching out and haven't got a call back. So I'd like to try to follow up with her before council actually makes that appointment. Because if you make that appointment, then you would have to remove them from that appointment before filling that spot with somebody else.
Okay, so we'll make sure she's interested before we.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
So we're good with voting the four in?
Yes, I'm, I'm comfortable voting the four in, yes, sir.
Okay, so then. I'll need a motion to appoint. Chris McIntyre, Danny Soria. Uh, Herman West and Susan Burgess to the, uh, Community Safety Advisory Committee.
You gonna do it? Yes, I'll make a motion to approve. As read. Do I need to read them again?
She need to read names?
No, you read them off already. I think you're good. Attorney, are you good? Okay.
Second?
Second, oh, go ahead.
Okay, so motion being seconded for discussion. Hold council.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, item C, city council election of a mayor pro team. That time of year.
I'm sorry, mayor, to finish out that last agenda item, can we go ahead and get the oath of office administered to the appointees?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, mayor. Sorry, Mayor. If we can get Ms. Burgess, Mr. West. Or Matt, you want to come up as well? And then we'll be, we'll be in contact probably later this week to schedule our first meeting and get the other ones in, but get them, get them sworn in.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, say that again.
It varies.
That is correct. That is correct. So how do you want to fix that? Your mic's off, by the way, sorry.
What did you say?
We could determine.
I know, I didn't hear the rest of it.
So two of the regular members are supposed to serve one-year terms. And then three regular members are supposed, supposed to be appointed to serve two-year terms. We need to designate or figure out. Which ones are serving one-year terms versus two-year terms.
Doesn't the, I think our. It's not a resolution. I think what we put together. Determines it, right? The first two, one or two names are the one year and then after that are the.
Well, that's what we, I think that's what he's asking for clarification on is do you want to go in order of the appointees that you listed? As in the first two or three or are the first stagger term and the second?
That's what we approved. I mean, the first two are only there for one year, just to stagger them. And I think the next time, aren't they up for two years?
John, I'll leave that up to you, whatever.
So again, it's, this is all it says. It's initially two of the regular members shall be appointed to serve a one-year term. And then three of the regular members shall be appointed to serve a two-year term. So.
What does it say after that?
Then it goes on to the community partner advisory members. So I think we'll, we'll need some sort of.
So at this time, you need us to name three that will hold a two-year term and two that will hold a one-year term.
Correct, yeah.
Got it. But we only swore in three.
Well, no, we've only sworn in two.
But you've appointed four. You have appointed four tonight. We need to identify which two are going to go.
But let's make this simple. We've had two that have already been sworn in. They're two-year terms.
Yes, two-year terms.
Next one that shows up. Be sworn in, two-year term. The last two will be one-year terms.
Okay.
Or one-year term till we get.
I think we're good with that, but I think what the attorney is getting at is we need a, we need a motion and a second for that. Yeah, listing the names.
Yeah, I would like that.
Okay.
All right, you got the names. I or you get to.
Well, I'll make the motion. Want me to make it?
You got the names right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that Herman West and Susan Burgess are two-year terms. And the next person that shows up.
Can you go ahead and, let's go ahead and pick a name. Pick, pick one of the two that's been appointed.
Chris McIntyre.
Okay, we'll do Chris McIntyre. Okay, those three will be two-year terms. Or started two-year term and Danny Soria and potentially, well.
Just Danny Soria as.
Danny Soria will be one year her first term and then. The next person on will be a one-year also.
That works.
Right?
Yes.
A second. Oh, go ahead. Sitting here waiting.
Any further discussion? Hold Council.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, next item. Good?
Yes.
Okay, next item, city council election of a mayor pro temp. So we're, we do this.
Charter requires us to do this every year.
Every year, okay. I didn't know if we changed that or not during the last charter revision, so. So I will. Look for nominations.
Okay, so we've had a good, good thing going for so long. I still think we need Susie Mackey as mayor pro temp.
I second that.
Any other discussion? Hold Council.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Can I vote for myself?
Aye.
Place five. Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, item D, ordinance number seven nine seven. An ordinance of the city council, city of Everman, Texas, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Everman, Texas. By amending section nineteen dash seven six, special ordinances prohibiting or regulating parking of vehicles at specific places. On designated streets of Division One. Generally. Generally of Article Three, stopping, standing and parking. Providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause and providing for an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance seven nine seven as read. Second.
Motion being seconded for discussion or elaborate?
Yes, I'll elaborate. And and I know how much council hates these last-minute ordinance coming before you, so I apologize, but I think if you allow me to explain, you'll understand why. This ordinance will restrict parking street side along all of Dan Meyer Boulevard, which stretches from Everman Parkway. Essentially through the middle of the campus back to Shelby Oak Grove Road. The reason why we are bringing this to you tonight is because the school district has reached out. The particular section between Townley Drive and Shelby Oak Grove Road has recently been very problematic. With abandoned vehicles, students parking where they shouldn't be parking over there, and it has caused a lot of problems both. For the day-to-day function of the school as well as traffic as the school buses come in or out. So they have asked what steps would need to be taken for us to be able to enforce any sort of parking regulation over there. And that's what this is, is taking action for. So by passing this ordinance, our officers will be able to enforce a no parking zone. There, we will have Public Works add signage there. And they have also entered into a private agreement with a tow company to handle the things in the parking lot, which is outside of our jurisdiction. So. We're just trying to address the immediate issues as we come up on the last couple of weeks of school. And that is typically when traffic and problems become the worst. So if we can get this ordinance passed tonight, I would be forever grateful.
Okay, what parking lot are you talking about?
It's, it's the high school parking lot. So there, there, Dan Meyer Boulevard. As you drive down by the school, there are parking spaces immediately to the east and west along the tennis courts. And kind of adjacent to the practice field. Those areas are not in a city right-of-way. That's what they've had to enter into a private agreement to handle. We can't enforce anything that parks in those specific parking spaces. But there have also been vehicles that are parking in the roadway. We had an incident where a vehicle was actually abandoned. Up there and left there for several weeks. But it was legally parked. There wasn't anything amongst the law that we were able to do. We had to go out, tag the vehicle. When we tag an abandoned vehicle, we have to leave it there for seventy-two hours. Before we're able to take any legal action and it just caused a lot of grief for, for several days.
Is this only for the section of Dan Meyer by the high school?
No, this is also, this is every portion of Dan Meyer between Everman Parkway and Shelby Oak Grove Road. So this will also include that section of roadway. Right by Johnson Park. That is a pretty wide section of roadway, but we've had some problems with people gathering there as well when they don't need to be. And would prefer those vehicles to be parked in the parking lot where they should be, not necessarily on the roadway.
So the entire stretch of Dan Meyer.
The entire stretch of Dan Meyer Boulevard, yes, ma'am.
Are we gonna put up signs?
Legally, we are required to put up signs and we will work with Public Works to get that done as quickly as we can.
Are you gonna put up signs on the school district's portion of Dan Meyer?
The school district actually already has the signs ready to go. They were ready to install them. They're just waiting on this. So when I call them in the morning, I have a feeling they'll be installed tomorrow if they're for us.
Think might be out there tonight. Any other discussion? Hold Council.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, item E, interlocal agreement for nine-one-one communications center and dispatch services between the city of Everman, Texas and the city of Blue Mountain, Texas.
Mayor, before you entertain a motion, I think we should have done an action item on this before. I I'm going to recommend council don't take any action on this yet tonight. Their attorney has made amendments to the agreement. And sent them back to us. Our attorney has not had an opportunity to review those and approve them yet, so I don't think it would be in our best interest. To approve this as of yet. I think we postponed this item to the next meeting. Essentially what this is, is this is the city of Blue Mountain has asked us to provide fire dispatching services for their city. We are certainly in a position to accommodate them. It will not require any additional staffing. It will not require any additional equipment. It will just simply be in addition and they're already set up to take care of it. We just need to get the agreement in place. They will be compensating the city of Everman thirty-five thousand dollars a year for those dispatching services. So.
So do we need to do anything to postpone it or table it? Okay, I'll make a motion to table. Interlocal agreement with Blue Mountain.
Second.
Motion being seconded. Any further discussion? Hold Council.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, executive session, item A, section five-five-one point oh-seven-one and section five-five-one oh-seven-four. Past performance evaluation and continued professional services with Snow Garrett Williams Certified Public Accountants. So time is seven twenty-two. We're going to executive session. So time is seven twenty-two. We're going to executive session.
Wow, it's cold in here.
Ready, meeting? Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. The time is seven forty. No action was taken. Uh, next item, city manager's report.
I've got just a couple of things for council tonight. Um, first and foremost, it's, it's the end of May. That means we're preparing to start budget. Um, so we're going to look, one thing we talked about that we'd like to do differently this year is really ahead, not much ahead, but a little bit ahead of the budget if we can. I think one of the first things we'd like to do is really just kind of a discovery work session with you and, and get your, get your, um, ideas and, and really what you wanna see happen with his next year's budget. Um, typically in the past, we've started working through just different sections of it. Uh, it's, I think it makes it easier on staff if we know what your vision is for this next year, uh, what you would like to see in the budget, so that way as staff is working on budget, we can make sure that we're throwing your considerations in as a part of that, um, rather than doing it the other way around. So I just think it makes more sense to, to get your vision on this next year's budget ahead of time. So we're gonna try to look at scheduling a workshop probably early June um, with you with the purpose of getting your vision for the budget and what you wanna see out of this next budget. So, um, we do, uh, I'm gonna recommend we do the public input piece again like we did last year. That was a pretty big success. Um, if for nothing else, there was a lot of knowledge that was shared with the public on what our budget was doing for the community and what our focus points were. Um, so it was a good opportunity. Uh, last year we did it in August. This year we need to do that early July, so we'll look to schedule that early in July. Um, and then also just a reminder for council that, uh, uh, human resources sent out an email. There's three mandatory trainings that are due by May thirty-first for, for all council and staff. Uh, the typical sexual harassment, um, cybersecurity and cultural, yeah, diversity in the workplace, I think.
I can never remember that.
Is that the other one?
Yeah.
Um, so those are the, those are the three mandatory trains that we've gotta do every year. So she sent those links out. If you didn't get them, let me know, and we'll make sure to resend it out to you or get you set up with it, so, um, other than that. I'm sorry?
Just resend it.
Just resend it anyway, you got it. Other than that, mayor, I don't have anything else.
Okay. I was gonna remind everybody to do your training, so, but we're covered, so, uh, that being said, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Time is seven forty-two. We are adjourned.
Alright.
Turn your mics off.